Mikes are good. Yeah, alright, so I'm gonna call this a meeting to order at six oh one, May fourth. Mia, you wanna lead us with the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, please stand up. Put your hands up. Ready? Yeah.
Thank you Mia. Right at this time, give could be the roll call.
Yes. Commissioner, alternate commissioner Gutierrez.
President.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Piquero.
Present.
Commissioner Lea.
Present.
Vice Chair.
Present. Alright, moving along, we're gonna go ahead and do the approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request the moving of an item of the agenda. Any of my fellow commissioners have anything?
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we're, we're at the approval of the agenda, is there anybody that wants to make adjustments for any items?
And then a motion to approve the agenda is presented.
A second then.
Give, give your roll call.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
I, I have a point. I'm sorry, what is it? Do I have a vote?
Yes, did you, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Alright.
Commissioner Piquero.
I.
Commissioner Lea.
I.
And vice chair nominated.
Alright.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now on to the approval of the minutes for item one, planning commission meeting minutes, April twentieth, twenty twenty two. Do you wanna, do we do both those together or separate?
Um, you, I would just recommend you do it one at a time.
Okay, so for the first item, I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes.
One second.
Uh, we'll call commissioner Gutierrez.
Epstein.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Piquero.
I.
Commissioner Lea.
Hi.
And vice chair nominated.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Right, onto the second item, under the approval of the minutes for the planning commission special meeting minutes on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. We have a motion.
Okay, and motion.
One second.
We'll call commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Epstein.
Commissioner Lea.
Hi.
Vice Chair nominated.
Epstein.
And then moving forward onto our written communications step, do we have anything?
Uh, no written communication from staff.
No, sure, you know, we're going to our public comments. These are the non-agenda items, the public may address the commission on any items of interest to the public that is not in the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof, please let me hear comments to three minutes. Step, do we have any public comment?
Uh, no comments that we received, uh, see, audience.
Now on to reports and requests. Do we have it?
No.
Now on to our non-hearing items, the public hearing calendar was a digital, so item number three is the cannabis business streamline code amendments.
Thank you, vice chair, members of the planning commission, Gabriel Paredes, your development services director. Uh, so I have a short presentation, well, it might be a little bit longer than we usually do. So, uh, thank you again, commissioner, this item before you is kind of as business streamline code amendments and this would be to amend the Coachella municipal code as they relate to cannabis business zoning and operation regulations in the city. This would impact, uh, title five and title seventeen of the municipal code, uh, so you know, basically why we're doing this effort. Um, you know, I started with the city may of last year and there was the interest in, uh, taking a look at the cannabis, uh, industry in the city, uh, since the city started allowing cannabis businesses after two thousand sixteen, uh, so it's been about five years since that time, so it was a good time to be able to assess the progress of, of the industry with staff and all the staff that's responsible for implementation of it at the city. So we formed a, uh, what was called a cannabis action team that really studied, uh, the progress of the industry. Uh, looked at the titlements had been approved, uh, also the ordinances that were approved by planning commission and city council. Uh, and so what I tried to do in the staff report is put a good, uh, chronology together uh, because we had to pull information from different places in a way to understand what's happened since two thousand sixteen. Uh, so what I wanna do is kind of go over that history, so it gives a good background of kind of what we did here at the city, has a good foundation and then go into why we thought there were changes that would be needed to make it easier for businesses, uh, that were interested in doing, you know, retail cultivation, manufacturing, to make it easier for the new business in the city. Uh, with the constraints, obviously there's some constraints that many of you have heard about, which is the availability of power, uh, in our industrial areas that would serve cannabis. So those are, that's a constraint that, um, the city doesn't have a lot of control over, that's a, uh, subject to the power purveyor ID, but, uh, but there's other things that we can do within our codes to make things easier. Back when, uh, cannabis was allowed by the state, uh, by the voters of California, you know, the city was an early entry into the industry, uh, so it quickly started adopting all these ordinances. Uh, and the city took a very conservative approach to it. And so, uh, so there's a lot of standards that were put in place that, uh, maybe made it a little bit difficult to kind of operate. You know, the city didn't know what was gonna happen, you know, was, you know, was the sky gonna fall if, uh, we started allowing these different types of businesses. I think since those five years, we were able to assess everything, realize, you know, the sky didn't fall by allowing this industry to come in, uh, it's still developing, uh, there are still some, uh, people that receive permits that are still trying to get off the ground and run the businesses in the city, uh, and we do our best to be able to support it, uh, you know, we do have a cannabis liaison uh, position which was recently vacated, uh, that tries to support the industry in the city, so I'm gonna go over the history first. Uh, this, there's a lot to unpack here, uh, and so this may take a long time. Uh, I also understand if there's a need for the planning commission to say, hey, there's a lot here, we need to consider setting this over multiple meetings. It's just, this, this is a pretty big leap up of our, of our standards for this industry. So I'll go into the history first and so the first slide, uh, here's the background, two thousand sixteen, uh, California voters approved proposition sixty four and this would be for legalizing, uh, cannabis use and then Senate, a Senate bill ninety four, two thousand seventeen, which reconciled the standards for medical cannabis because medical cannabis came first and then allowing for adult, uh, cannabis activity and more of the recreational use. So after those dates, uh, actually in two thousand sixteen, this, the, the voters approved the measure that authorized the city to impose a tax, uh, square foot tax for cultivation and manufacturing and then charge a six percent tax on revenues for cannabis. Uh, so after that, the next thing that was done is the city, uh, adopted ordinances that allowed medical cannabis cultivation, manufacturing and testing, distribution, the transportation in the wrecking yard zone in the city, and this is the zone off of Avenue forty eight, just east of, uh, Grapefruit Boulevard. Uh, subject to certain limitations, so you had to have a property of size of five acres had to be, uh, paved frontage of two hundred fifty feet and then a thousand feet from any residential zone and you had to get a conditional use permit. Uh, the other thing that was added was a section entitled by, in our business section of the code, uh, also requiring a cannabis regulatory permit. So you have to get like a conditional use permit and then you have to get a regulatory permit, which is kind of a business license for cannabis. That's kind of how that works. In July two thousand seventeen, the city adopted, uh, standards that would allow for cannabis testing laboratories with the conditional use permit in the auto wrecking zone uh, in the industrial park zone, and I'll talk about where, where the industrial park zone is in a bit. And the, uh, commercial, uh, general zones. February fourteenth, thousand eighteen, uh, the city started allowing retail cannabis businesses, uh, in the city. And that was subject to, uh, getting a conditional use permit uh, in the wrecking zone, for yard zone, so you can have a retail cannabis business there. Uh, right now, there's only one that operates there. The IP industrial overlay zone, and I'm gonna go into that overlay zone in a bit, but basically it's our three main industrial areas in the city. So that only requires a conditional use permit for those two areas. The other is the RC retail cannabis overlay zone. And so that's actually not an area that exists where the zone is there, but you can apply that zone to three particular areas and I'm gonna go into that in a bit. So you have to do a change of zone to make that, to have a retail, uh, business there. So, so one of the things that was adopted there was this idea of the retail cannabis overlays on. Um, and that would be allowed in two zones at that time in two thousand eighteen. It did require a distance of, of, uh, two hundred and fifty feet from a public or private school um, at that time. So in two thousand nineteen, the city adopted commercial cannabis activity amendments and that would allow for, uh, retail cannabis in the industrial park overlay zone. Uh, so where the permit center is and the corporate yard, that whole area is, is an eligible area for retail cannabis. Uh, it expanded the subzone one area, so actually the downtown area is considered the subzone one. So you might recall there was the, uh, Cheryl Thomas property on Sixth Street that, that where the CUP was revoked, that is, they were able to, to, uh, get a CUP there because it's in that zone in the subzone one. Subzone three, uh, was added in two thousand eighteen, so before there was only two subzone. Two thousand nineteen, the third one was added on Dillon Road and corridor, and I'll show you a map of what that looks like, but right now there is a permit for the Coachella Cannabis Club, that's one went through the planning commission and one thing. They're, they're building their tenant improvements, uh, in an existing building off the freeway. So the other thing, it added micro businesses with the CUP and that allows for different types of, um, smaller scale cannabis activity which can include cultivation. Uh, increase, increase the number of retail cannabis businesses from four, so originally we start off with four. Now the cap is ten, so there cannot be any more than ten retail cannabis storefront businesses in the city at all, so it's capped at ten. And then it expanded the area that, uh, retail cannabis could be to that art seal relays zone, which I described, the, uh, industrial park overlay zone and the auto wrecking zone. Uh, the other thing that it did in the IQ overlay zone, it said that you needed to have a project size of thirty acres, so it reduced it to ten acres. In two thousand twenty, uh, non-storefront retail cannabis business code amendments were adopted, and so what does that mean? So non-storefront means that you don't have an open storefront where people come in your front door to buy cannabis products, so that means then it's more of a, uh, a delivery system that happens there. Uh, usually wouldn't tell that there's a cannabis business there because they can't have a sign for this. In two thousand twenty one, the city adopted interim outdoor cannabis cultivation, so I was here at the time, so some of you probably remember when we did that. And so it allows outdoor cannabis cultivation in agricultural areas in the city in certain zones, so it's the area east of the eighty six expressway, south of the ten freeway, uh, east of Tyler Street and then north of Avenue fifty two and west of the All American Canal. Uh, when we, when we got to those standards, it still required that, uh, the CUP only be allowed for four years. Uh, you could have a maximum canopy size for the cannabis growing for two, two acres. And that had to be a thousand feet from schools and youth centers. Uh, since that time, uh, the planning commission and council removed that two acre canopy size so that it's unlimited. And then this year, February, the city council adopted a new tax rate structure for cannabis and so cultivation was set at, uh, two percent, uh, charge tax. Retail, six percent, we can't change that because that was what was authorized by the voters. Uh, manufacturing that two percent, distribution at zero, testing at zero percent. Uh, in two thousand twenty one, the finance director at that meeting reported that the cannabis tax revenues were a million eight hundred ninety seven thousand five hundred fourteen dollars. Uh, so that's the history, it's kind of a long history, hopefully it's a good overview of kind of what's happened over time. Uh, and so we've looked at the standards and, you know, have some recommendations to amendments, so I'm gonna go into the reasons why we think tho- those make sense. This map in front of you, um, shows the different areas where cannabis is allowed. So you'll see three colored areas that are yellow, pink and blue. So what the city said is that those are areas that could qualify for the industrial park overlay zone, so in the industrial park overlay zone allows for commercial cannabis activity. But you can't just like get a conditional use permit, uh, operate in there. In order to, in order to have the industrial park overlay, you have to apply for a change of zone which means you have to go to the planning commission and to the city council to get approved, so it's not just the CUP need, it's the changes on to make that happen. Um, the other green boundary is the outdoor cultivation area and, uh, and so this planning commission has approved, uh, two permits. Uh, one is the Nick Messop permit on five acres and then the other one is the Coachella Valley growers on, I don't know, acres, five, were they eighty? Eighty acres, yeah. And there's interest by others to be able to operate, um, in that zone. But a lot of the potential cultivators have expressed concern about four-year limitation, so they wanted some more certainty that they could operate longer than four years because the investment is pretty high. If you, uh, somebody went on the tour where we went to one of the outdoor cultivators, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a pretty substantial operation out there. Uh, the other zones shown on here are retail subzones one, two and three. And that's where I mentioned, that's where you can operate a cannabis business, but you have to apply the retail cannabis overlay, so the changes on as well, so you can't just get a CUP from a planning commission, you have to apply the overlay with the change of zone and that change of zone also has to be approved by the city council. So just a closer look at subzone one, so this is kind of close to the area that we're in. Uh, this area is a lot of the properties on Grapefruit Boulevard on, on both sides. And, uh, and so, uh, one of the, some of those ten dispensaries are allowed, can locate in this area. And so the city has allowed, uh, a few dispensaries, not all of them have opened, I'm gonna show you where they are with a different map. So that's one subzone, the other is subzone two, so some of you might be familiar with the lighthouse which operates there. Two dispensaries are allowed to open in that area, currently there's only one and that's where, that's on the corner of Avenue forty eight and Bamburgh Street. So subzone three is the Dillon Road area. And so, um, so the ten freeway goes through that subzone but it's really, uh, highlighted by Dillon Road and the Coachella Cannabis Club is a dispensary that is going through the tenant improvements to open in the area, and that's the only one that has been permitted in the area.
That's the one, it's supposed to be the chicken place?
In the chicken restaurant, yeah. So, you know, uh, so these conditional use permits do go through the planning commission, but the city council, they're the ones that set the criteria for these businesses to be able to have that, uh, privilege to apply for that conditional use permit. So there's been different rounds when we have the four retail cannabis businesses that could open originally. There was a certain criteria for those businesses and then when it was the full ten, there was a different criteria. So you might, so that's why the chicken restaurant is part of that one, one of the criterias that you have the ability to spend the second business. Public cannabis, that's looking open, you know, they, they were gonna have a coffee shop. So there were certain criteria that the city council established at that time for these dispensaries to get the full amount of points and get qualified for it. Uh, the other area that you can get, uh, a retail cannabis license is in the auto wrecking zone. So you don't need to do a change of zone in the area, as long as you're in the wrecking yard zone, then you can operate there, um, a retail cannabis business. Now there's only one there and that's on the Marcelo, uh, property, which is the same property in that area that just opened, I think, last month. But it's a little bit easier here, right, you don't need to apply for that change of zone, you just need to see a CUP from the planning commission. The other area is this area here, which is the, uh, industrial, this industrial park, this is where the permit center is and the corporate yard for the city. And so there is one disentery there that just opened recently to, uh, Coachella Reedy uh, because it was eligible to apply in that area. So I'm gonna, these are the businesses that have opened. Uh, it's a little hard to see, but that little, uh, pink triangle near the ten freeway, that's the Coachella Cannabis Club, they're approved, they're going through construction on their tenant improvements. Here's a map of the, uh, businesses in that subzone, uh, one for the downtown.
Did the best friends one end up opening as the delivery one, right?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, they, I, I believe they're open.
Okay, because it's very discreet, you can't, like, pass by, you don't know it's open, so you don't have to ask, it was.
And that's because they can't, you know, they can't sign, yeah, no, anything like that, that attracts people to go there.
But, but it's an operation.
There was two, wasn't there, one, uh, the Wallahalla Shopping Center and then also the one behind Cardenas?
There's one in green, you can see at the bottom of the screen there. Yeah, the one by Cardenas is the one that, uh, Commissioner Piquero assigned us. So there's some along Grapefruit Boulevard which are specifically dispensaries, right? That's a storefront retail where you can walk into the front door and buy goods there. Uh, so the reason why the city council established that area there is that they thought that it would, um, bring, started as a destination and, and bring businesses, providing businesses in that area of downtown. Uh, but not all the businesses have opened yet, so you have, uh, the Green House that their permits have actually expired. You have Coachella Smoke which is open. Uh, the Libra, that's the building that you see, that's our building on, a two-story, that they haven't finished construction. Um, they're looking to complete it by two thousand twenty three. Kismet is the one that where we, the CUP was revoked. And then the last one is Public Cannabis and they're right now going through the plant check process right now for their, their business. Uh, in the industrial park, there's been some cultivation businesses that were approved by the planning commission and city council. Uh, two of them are pretty large, but they have it developed, uh, obviously those sites are still vacant. So one of them's called Coachella Green and then the other one is called Cannabis uh, Project and then the Coachella Reedy Project is shown on there. Just to the south of there, there's another industrial building that the planning commission and council allowed for, uh, micro businesses. And here's an image that shows both that sub area two for that Glenroy Hotel area and then the auto wrecking zone. So there was, there are quite a few projects that were approved in the auto wrecking zone that primarily are like, uh, cannabis cultivation and manufacturing. Uh, and there are different stages, right, so the ones in pink show approved. So the one that you can see there, Desert Rock two, they're under construction right now and that's, they're doing cultivate, they're, they will be doing cultivation with greenhouses. Uh, Desert Rock four is in plant checks, same thing, they're gonna be doing cultivation. Coachella warehouses, that's where the, uh, Del Groll facilities are and we did take a tour there with commissioners and, and city council, but they're still building out that site. Uh, and then Kismet, uh, they do have some, some facilities that they've developed there. But some of the other projects, like you see on there, Coachella Big Palm Business Park, that hasn't been all, neither has the Desert Rock one project. And some have expired. Uh, but the challenge here has always been, uh, the availability of power, right? So IV does require, uh, any of those projects that wanna fully build out to, uh, dedicate a substation to the city and we've learned that can be upwards of fifteen million dollars or more. So that's been a little bit of an obstacle. So I showed you kind of all the maps, uh, what I wanna go into is, well, before I go on into the amendments, is there any questions? And if not, we can go on to the question at the end, but the proposed amendments would be this, that we remove the requirement for both commercial cannabis activity, meaning that would be cultivation, manufacturing, testing, distribution or retail cannabis, which would be either non-storefront or storefront retail to pursue a zone change to apply either the retail cannabis overlay or the industrial park overlay. So the reason I recommend that is if you're in a particular zone, like the idea is that you create that zone because that's the zone where you want that business. But on top of that, we're saying, okay, no, you can't just get a CUP, you also have to apply for a change of zone to apply the overlay to your property. And I think it, it just doesn't make sense, it's like an obstacle, right? So if we want in that area, okay, we want it there, so then the next logical step is their application may be evaluated with the CP.
That's something I was confused with, like, why have them subdivisions or the subzones?
That's something I was confused with, like, why have them subdivisions or the subzones? Right, I like allocated towards these businesses and then have them go back and change them. So that would.
And I'll and I'll give you a reason why it makes it difficult too, so the Kismet. The the permit that was approved for six street in the uh. Number older buildings, right? So even though we revoked the C U P. When you do it, a a zone change, the zone stays there, right? And so even though the C U P was revoked, the retail cannabis overlay is still there on the property. So it's like, if you revoke it, then you're still stuck with the the zone, so that's why it just doesn't make sense to me that. We require an applicant to go through that hoop uh the plan to the zone change. Now, it does allow for a higher level review at the city council, right? So maybe the city council doesn't want to review these. But uh but I don't know that, right? So the council will probably weigh in on that after the right conditions you make on these amendments. But I think to make it easier, it would be good for the C P process to go or and then it goes to the financial. City council can always. Appeal your decision, and if they were had a concern with it, they could always do that, right? So that's kind of staff thinking that that would make this process easier. If we were to remove that need for the change of zone.
So how do we do it at the wrecking yards? Because they only have to do a C U P, you don't have to do a zone change, so.
So that one's easier, so it's a lot more.
Why couldn't we just generalize that whole concept, you know?
So that's what this process would do is make it kind of like that, yeah, we already do that for one of them, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, because the the C O P and the change is on all that's.
Yeah, it just, it just makes it harder. Um so the next one is eliminating the subzones for the retail cannabis businesses. Um and I'll I'll show you a map just to get an idea, so what I, what we'd like to do. If we're eliminating the subzones. Then, okay, then where can you have a re- uh retail cannabis business then? So if we eliminate the subzones, then what we would say, wh- what I think recommend is just allowing it in commercial zone. And then let the council dictate the criteria uh like, you know, they have to have another business. They want it to be a thousand feet away from the Earth Residential, they can do that separately. But um so I'll show you what this looks like, but what this would allow for is greater flexibility. There's already a ten dispensary cap, so we're never gonna, unless the council decides to raise that limit. Eight of them are already kind of being used, right? So there's only two available because of the C U P, we were both on Sixth Street. And then that greenhouse business I mentioned that expired. So they would be able to operate under just more flexible standards in in a commercial zone. But it would still be reviewed by plant commission.
So the money you ma- you mentioned, uh one point eight from the finance department. What was that money specifically generated from, from which, how many of the dispensaries and and growth facilities?
Yeah, all all that's all together. And so I don't know what the breakdown is between the dispensaries and the cannabis, but I can get that information.
Yeah, because the cannabis storefronts actually generate six percent, you said, huh? And the other ones are. Two percent, yeah, so, okay.
So and and also realize that, right, like the amount of money that's coming into the city, that's with not all the retail. Businesses operating, Coachella really wasn't open. The one in the auto wrecking zone wasn't open, total cannabis hasn't opened. Canal can't uh club hasn't opened. So so we expect revenues will likely increase, because almost the the retail cannabis businesses will like double. When they're finally open, right?
So those monies go specifically to the general fund, is it, and the way it's allocated?
Yeah, so they're not designated and spent in certain areas, so. Yeah, and then the council decides where you want to put those funds.
You gotta. Kind of split apart for all the different nonprofits out there.
I have a question. But these sort of changes, it's because uh. To be flexible or or adjust to. Uh pending proposals, tentative proposals, who who would it benefit?
Um that wouldn't benefit any pending proposal. There is one proposal that I'll go into that is not related to retail cannabis. That may benefit from some of the changes here, or may, I'll go into that in a second. You don't mind, but uh. So I'll I'll get to that one in in a in a bit. But as far as any dispensaries, there there is no one else that would benefit.
So it would happen now if we that amendment, the one you proposed, you would open up instead of these red. Little blotches and specific spaces, you'd open up the whole map.
Well, we'd only be open at the whole map to those red areas.
To the right.
All those commercial, different commercial zones in the city.
So it would allow like um like over here on Avenue fifty two, you see that Calhoun, like. It would open specific little spots that would, you know, would be ideal for dispensaries, like. In my mind, you know, that's the closest to like. The western part, right, and so you have more stuff like in India, and people from India can come over and. Like it's the, it's the foot traffic, right? So so that would help there, and then it would give the whole corridor, Caesar Choppy's corridor availability, right, so.
Yeah, and so I think some of the challenges that I I've noticed is. Because I'm gonna go back to those subareas real quick.
Because there's only way you gave that we could make recommendations on where those monies could be allocated, like, and they just say, uh. You know, refurbishing of some of the old neighborhoods and the parks and. You know, some money into the streets, you know, some of the nonprofits that, you know, it it become entitled money, you know, going to specific. Organizations, I think, would would happen, I mean, the community would embrace the, you know, especially this cannabis storefronts, because they would. They're gonna be for a good purpose in the community across the board, not just, you know, to the general fund.
Yeah, um I there's probably two ways to do it, and then I would also ask uh our our legal counsel, uh Henry. If he has some thoughts too, I mean, two things I'm thinking about. Right now, there isn't anything in the municipal code that says how that money would be used.
These are just hypotheticals, I mean, just thinking outside the box, you know?
So that's one way, right, could be in this book, but usually cities don't like to lock themselves in that way.
Yeah, yeah.
But the other one is just making recommendation with your recommendation on this proposal.
Well, the council.
Which would be a recommendation for council.
Yeah, the council could entertain the ideas, you know, and hopefully take it from there.
Yeah.
Just throwing it out there.
Henry, do you, you have any uh other thoughts on that?
Um so I I would kind of piggyback off of your comments too, that the planning commission wouldn't have that authority under the the. The municipal code, but you as individuals can all can always make a recommendation to the city council and. And through your relationships with them, um talk to them about this idea. But it wouldn't be an official act of the planning commission, of course.
No, no, I just uh all recommendations, obviously. But uh I think they gain a, you know, some support across the community.
Yeah, and we can put that, you know, there's recommendations like that, that would be included in the minutes that we would take with the the side of both the council. So uh let's see.
I've shared some ideas with the friends that are representatives at the state level. About the lottery saying that, you know, what uh they should be designated for certain things, for parks and. Recreation or schools, and that way when people buy lottery tickets, they're entitled, entitled money that goes specifically for those purposes and. You know, right now they say go to school, but you know, I've heard a lot of that money doesn't go to school, but. I think the idea of it being, or even the Salsi restoration, you know, like buy lottery tickets. That money goes for Salsi restoration, we're just, you know.
Yeah.
Some idea that, but.
Yeah, I mean, feel free to share that during the meeting, the rules that if the minutes the council receive. So I'm going back to this map, so you you might have seen there is quite a few dispensaries allowed in this area. But it's a small geographic area, right? And so what that means is that you you need to look for a property, if you don't own it. Where the landlord is willing to lease the property. And sometimes that's a challenge too, because if if that property, there's a loan on it, sometimes they don't allow a renter to do cannabis. Right, so it's very limiting for someone to be able to operate in that area. And so so I also think expanding the area opens up the opportunities. Uh otherwise, we're just limited to just kind of like a few areas. And then maybe the over concentration isn't good, right? Because you're you're capturing like the same market, right? So one thing I realized with the Chalke Candy Club, well, they're probably gonna capture. The market for people passing through the freeway, right? That's a different market than maybe people that would come from downtown. So so I think it just opens up some opportunities, but also doesn't have a. A negative impact, because they still have to be a thousand feet from youth centers, from uh schools, and still meet those requirements. Uh so the next one is. Okay, so those are all the commercial zones in the city, uh that area and the the agricultural area. That big red block block uh actually isn't there anymore, there's a project that was approved that the plant commission and council considered, which is the. Vista de la Ua specific plan. But everything else would would be fair game, but remember, that doesn't mean that there's more than ten dispensaries in the city. Uh but that could be an area where available licenses uh could look for for dispensary. Uh the other amendment is this, is to allow commercial cannabis activity. Now, remember again, commercial cannabis activity is a little bit different than retail cannabis activities. The commercial cannabis activity, we, the manufacturing, distribution. Uh cultivation. And so instead of being limited to these. Sorry about that. Instead of being limited to these three areas in yellow and pink and blue. What we would say, well, we're gonna restrict it to. The two zones, the manufacturing service and the heavy industrial zone. Those are the zones that are in those subareas anyway. But what we're saying is to have commercial cannabis activity. That you can't do it unless you have the I P overlay, so you're doing that change of zone again. You're not just getting the conditional use permit, you're having to go to a plant commission city council to get that change of zone adopted. Uh and then we type those subareas where it can be located to. General plants of areas, so there's the downtown expansion area, self employment district, and then the north employment district. So north employment district, that was area that's kind of around the auto wrecking zone. The south employment district is an area where the city's permit center is. And then the downtown expansion area, uh some of you might have heard, it's been called uh Zona Sentad. To the east of the the railroad. Um so we would do away with that and say, okay, you can do can commercial cannabis in the manufacturing service. Heavy industrial zone, you already have to have that done anyway, but we're just taking away those subareas. You would still have to satisfy the six hundred foot distance requirement we have from resident residential zone lots. So when we were thinking about this, I was like, okay, well, what's the impact, right? What does this look like on a map? So we took a buffer around all the residential areas, six hundred feet around them, that's shown in yellow. Uh and so those are the areas that you could not do commercial cannabis activity. But you could see those original subareas that I put in. Um in the black border, the green border, and then a darker green border, those were the original subareas. So you can still do the commercial cannabis there. But you could see that it does allow for some new areas uh east of the eighty six expressway. Uh and this goes into one application that we do have before the city that the alternate commissioner was asking about. There is an interested party that is interested in doing an industrial development off of Airport Boulevard. Uh they are interested in doing uh cannabis like cultivation. So what staff is telling them when they submit application is that, well. They were supportive of allowing them to do that, but they would have to apply for a general plan amendment. Which is like, to me, it just doesn't make sense for them to do that, to change the general plan for that purpose. To me, it doesn't make more sense for us to be like, okay. If we want to be more flexible, let's do it through the municipal code in a way that makes sense, right? So this, what what we would be doing is take away the subareas. It would allow for it in all those areas that are that dark blue, that light blue. And the purple areas, those are pretty much the areas where they were allowed before, but it would allow for a little bit more. Uh in the areas east of the eighty six that actually were allowed before. And still maintain the six hundred foot distance requirement from residential. So the the next thing we want to do was uh create uh a revocation procedures for conditional use permits and architectural review. So in talking to the city attorney, they felt that our revocation procedures. Uh weren't uh that strong. Uh so what were included in there were findings that could be made to be able to replicate an application, right? That doesn't happen too much, I mean, the last one that happened was for the Kismet C U P. But at times, uh you know, the lighthouse that went through a proceeding. So uh if you was opinion of the legal council, like hey, you want to have some stronger. Um standards for uh revoking a architecture review or conditioning use permit. Um the other is to establish a twelve year maximum time period for outdoor cannabis cultivation. So I mentioned there were interested parties that wanted to do outdoor cultivation. But when they were meeting with us, we're like, well, if if I'm only assured I only have four years, then. You know, I don't know if it's worth the investment to do that. Uh I know when when we take an assignment to playing commission. I think the playing commission really didn't have issues with the four years, I think even added a something where we were mine. Now, again, that they should renew their conditional use permit. So they were interested in seeing some more teeth in terms of a of a maximum. So there was an economic development subcommittee meeting that happened about, let's say about two months ago, that. Two of the council members are on, so Mayor Hernandez, a council member in Delgado. Uh and they were kind of supportive of this idea of a twelve year maximum, which would be considered interim. But I think I thought after twelve years, that seems a little bit more permanent. So uh so that was one of the ideas.
No stipulations at all, or after the four years?
Um I guess it could be revisited, so what this would require is coming back to the playing commission every four years. You guys would assess like, hey, maybe after four years, like this is not going well, right? For the city, and you can decide not to renew it, so it doesn't give them the twelve years. But after the four years, they do come back to you, and then you renew it, and so the idea is that they'll renew it. All the way up to twelve years, so if they're if they're bad operators, then.
Yeah, exactly.
Um so though, that's kind of like the bulk of of the changes that that we propose here. Uh and what I wanted to be able to do is is entertain questions uh that you you may have. Uh the other change that's in here, uh that's on the slide, is for conditional use permits and architectural reviews. So right now, if you approve a conditional use permit or architectural review, it's only good for one year. So when I was looking at some of these businesses that were trying to get off the ground. Their C U P doesn't become vested, meaning that doesn't have like a a time, like a the shot clock on. Like it like it wouldn't expire after a certain point, doesn't expire once again, like a can uh certificate of occupancy. So when they operate, then it's adapted, right, then keep keep operating. So right now, our the C P in our catch review, if they haven't built their project, it would expire after one year. So the adjacent city is a like in India, have a two year expiration timeframe. Which to me, I think, makes a lot more sense, because. Uh if we're saying you're vested, once you're doing diligent construction or have a certificate of occupancy. Well, sometimes it's just hard to get past plan check uh within a year, right? And so so I think it makes sense to have that two years. We would still have the ability to extend it for three one year extensions after that. But it gives a little bit more uh breathing room for happening. And this wouldn't just apply to cannabis businesses, this would apply to anyone that's proposing development in the city. Let's say it's like a retail center, well, after a year, they have to have their permits in hand for certain construction. That's kind of, I I I realized that was pretty difficult when we were doing these plan checks. And so they're kind of in a snick, they don't know if the plant commission is gonna approve their. And so they're kind of in a snick, they don't know if the plant commission is gonna prove their time extension or not. And so it's a big investment that they have to make to be able to do that. Uh, and then just looking at what the other cities do. Um, you know, it sounds like that's a pretty reasonable, that's kind of the standard of business that they have in their cities.
This is not just the cities, Gabe, but we can do, like, obviously do with the state criteria also. So, you know, some of those obstacles are, but sometimes take a little more than a year, so.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think the two years makes sense, you know?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think it makes sense, it, it kind of gives us a par, it makes us competitive with uh other cities. So if other cities are doing cannabis, if they are a little bit more flexible with that timeframe, then they're, they have a little bit better advantage than us. Let's see, uh, the other thing that we changed was in the auto wrecking zone, I mentioned earlier. You have to have a property that's five acres in size. Or a, and a page two hundred fifty foot, the street frontage. I'm like, well, why don't we do that? Like, to me, it doesn't make sense, why do you need square fifty foot street frontage to have a cannabis business? Like, what in the two hundred fifty feet is important? And so what we've done since that time, we had to issue a variance for one business for them to operate. And so if we are granting the variance, it's like, well, we might as well just change the standard, we're willing to allow, could deviate from this requirement. Uh, and so that's why I'm requiring, uh, that's why I suggest we make that change here. Cause there's really no impact, right? You're a smaller property with less for street finance. There was, to me, it really doesn't matter.
Yeah, but it, it makes a difference too, don't you think? There's a, you have a delebated infrastructure, the plan and curb and gutter and, let's say, paint streets, you know, I mean, so.
We stop the repair it, even if it's a small property, yeah, so we would change that, that requirement or obligation.
Okay.
To do those improvements.
Okay.
So, so based on our review of, you know, all the application, what's going on, uh, you know, these are some of the changes that. You know, I think makes sense, uh, I think it, it still gives us certain protections in the city. Still requires a plan commission to review all these applications. You still have to make the findings to approve uh these permits. Uh, but also allows us to be a little bit more competitive in this industry, which is. Uh, we realize it's becoming less profitable to the industry as the price of cannabis has been, been going down actually over the years, right? So it is a pretty competitive industry, the more that we can uh support that industry and, and. Make it a little bit easier to do business, the more it could thrive and potentially benefit the city. Uh, so that's the end of my staff report, and you have any questions, uh, please let me know. But our recommendation is to adopt the resolution. Uh, you're not approving these amendments, you're making a recommendation to the city council.
Yeah, I have a couple question. Uh, first of all, uh, that, uh, the proposed project, pretended project on fifty-six, fifty-six and what?
Uh, fifty, it's pretty much at the corner of Airport Boulevard and eighty-six expressway. So it's, um.
What side of the railroad?
On the east side. On the east side. It's kind of like an island between the, the Whitewater River.
Yeah.
And the eighty-six expressway.
Hmm, and the other thing is this. Uh. Uh. More of a priority for cities, especially Coachella. Is the separate from cannabis. Is the production, cultivation, production, commercialization is housing. Best and future schools, it's the, in the city of the city's area of influence. Is the, right now, uh, the limitation for the distance between one of these operations. And a residential area is six hundred?
Six hundred feet, yeah, distance from commercial cannabis.
And the school, a thousand. Yes, assuming it's the. The city grows in its housing stock. Okay, and the ideal location for a future school site. Or residential area is the, is closer to six hundred feet. Or a thousand feet from one of these operations that right now is being considered as the. Yeah. These were, these amendments, is the. What would be more of a prayer? If, if, if the permit was for years instead of twelve years. I said, there'd be a, a way out, is the, what, what I see is that. There's an interest, okay? Yes, I know it's not in the planning department, cause you're not gonna develop these amendments, these proposals in vacuum. There's gotta be some interest, okay? Either the city manager's level, city council, or the state and, and proposed developer, okay? To make these uh changes that in the future could is the affect the future housing development in the city or. Or, or, or school sites, that would be my concern. That they, that uh, we'd have to wait the twelve years instead of four years to. Do the right thing.
You know, one of the things, I don't know if it makes sense to bring it up now, but I was, uh, it's kind of one of, uh, some of the new subdivisions are coming into town. That thirty percent, up to thirty percent of them are being purchased by, by investors and people that are turning around and using those as Airbnbs. Uh, I don't know what the legal wording is, if, if we could actually reduce those numbers, you know, to, to, to a smaller percentage. I would say five, ten percent to give the opportunity to people who want to make an investment, long-term investment in our community, so. I don't know what the legal, you know, maybe Henry can answer that question, if we have any, any control over that, or just, I know it's an open market, but uh. I think that, you know, something that, you know, if we can do something about it, that would really help the residents, for people that want to be, you know, potentially become residents. Of our, of our city and, you know, willing to make long-term commitments to this community.
Yeah, it, well, commission of those in terms of, of that question. Yeah, there probably is, there is ways people address it through their torture rental standards and sometimes there's limitations. Distance requirements, amount you can have in the neighborhood, so there's, there's ways to do that, or it's pretty open in terms of.
Yeah, cause that's a substantial amount of houses, you know, especially when, uh, you're building subdivisions or I, they're pre-sold before they're even built. And it's, you know, thirty percent, it's the people that want to make long-term commitments to this community. And an investment, you know, the house is your, your major investment. But uh, when you get thirty percent of people coming out from side to, and then they, they become Airbnb's. And we already know what the situation with Airbnb's, you know, the neighbors are complaining, you know, partying and doing all that, you know, and that. So, I don't know, I don't know what, uh, the legal wording would be, or if we even have any type of legal position on that.
Yeah, and we can bring that, I, I know it's a little bit different than the cannabis item, but we can bring that item. Cause we're gonna be going through our housing element pretty soon, having to come back to the playing commission. So I think those would be good suggestions for the housing element. Cause they're gonna have programs and things that the city should be doing differently with housing. And I, I've, I've heard that too, so it's not like the first time that's come up, um, but, you know, and then we. Allow us to do that research and figure out like what's really going on with new developments. In, in terms of commissioner, with the others, you, what you mentioned, so. I think that's your challenge of the playing commission here is to figure out that balance of. You know, how far you want this industry to go, and then the balance between the quality of life issues in the city. Uh, as far as where these cannabis businesses would go, they have to be a certain distance from residential or, uh. Or schools, uh, but that doesn't preclude uh housing themselves from locating close to them. This, that, this only precludes these business from locating close to that, so there isn't a restriction for them. Uh, but at the same time, it does open. Um, doesn't, does make it easier to operate, right? Doesn't make it a whole bunch easier to operate than what we're already doing, but, um. But that's the balance that city council and playing commission has to look at, right? What's the right balance in the city compared to all the other businesses that you want to have in the city, considering future schools and residential?
Hmm, you know, to Commissioner Gutierrez's point where. Prime example is you have a dispensary down here on Grand Boulevard, you have a school, right? And so that, does that one have a variance? Like all these on the street have a variance for the school, or are they just far enough, just barely? The one thousand feet.
I think they're, they're far enough, yeah.
Okay, so I think by doing this opening space and allowing for more space, you can monitor. What's, where, where's what items and very, you know, strategically. Plan, and as you work with developers, planning and, and working with school districts and where, where strategically where things are gonna go that. Aren't gonna impact both type of businesses, right? Cause the school district is a business and, and it's an educational business. And so in my, in my purview, of working, of working higher education, it's all in the business model. And so it opens the space, you have this whole other location over here, right? Cause you, you look at like cities of Palm Springs and other bigger cities, Palm Desert, they have it in their big industrial parks, and it stays away from. A, a city like Palm Desert is very, very interesting to look at, because they have cannabis, but it's a very far away from their schools. It's far away enough from their, you know, housing, and they're a pretty outdeveloped uh place, but you know, I agree with you that we're not developed. And how do you properly place them, but I think it's, it's placing the map now and the overlay to help the development of new housing. And new schools and new parks so that they stay away from those, right? Cause you, you set this, this is the timestamp, and this is where you can only build, and so you just don't allow that to grow. In, in like increments, so that way you can properly strategically plan capital projects and things like that, so. But I do agree with you, it should, the red should stay red and it shouldn't grow more in the, like, the next ten years, because that allows ten years and a decade for. Uh, capital projects of the city in different ways, so.
The, is it possible that we could do, like, we could continue this item and do more of a study session? Cause I feel like it's a lot to unpack, just uh, uh, given these two hours that we have together.
Yeah, definitely, and that, that's why I kind of mentioned at the beginning. Um, if, if, and I'm not sure what the rest of playing commission thinks, but if you do want to do that. Uh, the thing I would ask you to do is, are there questions that you have right now that we can bring back answers to? Is there more information that you'd wanna see for the next time that we?
For me, I, I think I would like to see the breakdown of the, the revenues, like Commissioner Gonzalez had stated.
The other one would be what proposed, um, like housing growth is already in play. And how that would affect like, were potential reds, the potential increase of place and how that would impact, like either diminish, cause I know like. There's the whole like. Have you, like, there's a whole street that's just getting all the new home, home tracks, right? And so it's, how does that impact the growth there, so?
Yeah, we can do that.
So.
I think, I think also it's important to take in consideration Mr. Gutierrez's, uh, point of view, you know, uh, how the city is gonna grow in the future. From five years, ten years, how many schools are we planning to uh build within the city, you know, cause I, I see that. To the east is not possible right now, but uh, like around this area, how schools are gonna start growing, and I think that. It should be smart to contact the city and see how they, they're planning to move on. Strategically, strategically with the population growth, you know? How many schools we're gonna put in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, which I think is important for the city and for the community. So I think it's a, it's a good point from Mr. Gutierrez.
I, I don't know if it exists right now, but when I was in the school board, we did a, uh, a thirty year master plan. For the development of school sites in the district, it would be good to take into account the, the school district. And see what plans they, they may have for the future.
Maybe we can, uh, ask for a request, uh, some kind of documentation of what they're expecting the growth or potential schools. For the next five, ten years or even fifteen years.
Yeah, they have like an overlay or something.
Yeah, they're kind of really with population growth and, and where they're gonna need a future school site. So maybe we can get that on the next, uh, the next meeting. Then we can look at it, take it from there.
And, and response to.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's the, uh. It's, uh, the planning commission is the, based on. Staff recommendation that establishes zones. Okay, this commission with a staff recommendation. That decides, I say, for future, uh, different zones, it's the. Are gonna be established in the city, subject to the city council.
Yeah, but the school district.
It up or, or rejected.
Yeah, the school's obviously gonna have their, have their own studies and impact areas of where the growth is and where the potential. Where they could potentially put another school site, it's an elementary school during high school or high school.
But technically, the, the planning commission is, establishes the zones in the city.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, obviously with staff input, but it's all subject, everything that's decided here is all subject to, as the, to. Appeal to the city council or the support or not from the city council, but, but here is where is the. You can set a future direction for housing development, commercial development, light industrial, is the development in the city.
Is there any other information that you think you would need for the next time you hear the sound? I mean, it's pretty good, I get, this is all information I can get.
Okay.
You want more?
So we get an update to, uh, is it possible to see like where people are at in terms, cause I know we have what? Eight permits out?
Yeah, I probably do like a list.
And I, I, I think it's just like, that would be something good for us to see, like, uh, in terms of. Where they're at in opening or where they're at in, in cultivation and. Cause we, we allow these permits or we, right, and we're not seeing anything to be developed. Or things like that, so I think it would be cool to.
You said how many, I'm sorry, you said there was how many in operation right now?
I don't know if it says, so there's hotel relief, uh, can it, well, can it, it's not open yet, so really.
Tower of the towers. There's three, there's three or four.
Lighthouse.
Yeah, the lighthouse, yeah.
Um, there is.
Could just.
Smoke shop, right? Smoke shop. Okay.
So, so.
Right now, I think it's just four.
So we, we have a cap of ten. So I think it makes sense, because after the ten, and you know, we'll look at it down the road, and then once we, if we make an assessment, that makes sense to.
Okay.
To keep it a ten or add some additional ones, and I think we could make that assessment when we get there. But we're not even there yet, cause we only have, you know, uh, four, I guess, that are in operations, so.
Four in operation or underway this year.
Then the other thing to, for the next meeting, to talk about the concentration and what it does with, um. The saturation of it sitting only in one spot, and how this expansion would. Decrease saturation in a specific location and, and create, um, what you call access at different points of the city. So it's no longer, um, saturated just on one corridor. So I think just a little bit more information on how that, how would that would benefit, you know? Not we, just because you have ten, but even in the long term, when it's reassessed, if ten is the max or if it's increased, and how that helps not keep it saturated in one spot. Because you also have to think about the market for the, 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 the operator who then wants to come in open, and they're like, well, I'm not gonna really. My estimated, you know, is not gonna be actual revenue, I'm gonna be losing money or profit, so kind of how that supports the, uh, the saturation of being in one spot, so.
Good Mr. Perez, I don't know if you have. Big enough staff for a time, but it's there, with, uh, identifying those sites as the operation. Their development is the, I'm very interested in knowing what the status is.
Their development is the, I'm very interested in knowing what the status is of that side on forty-eight. And the echo station is the, and I'll tell you why, because I go through there almost every day. Okay, and and it's a project that. Isn't completed. Don't know if it's going to be completed ever. Yes, I've heard. Uh the county may have an interest in developing into a mental health center or site. It's the, and it's the, since the pandemic, before the pandemic, it's the. Uh I had the idea, I think I shared it with Dr. Gomez when he was superintendent in the district. Uh some other individuals in Riverside, uh as a, a a site or converting that site into a. Uh teachers or educators village. Uh there's one already in Corona, okay? And and the concept is that there's a lack of teachers. There was a lack of teachers. Uh before the pandemic, it's worse now, is that it it's really bad in Palo Verde Valley and Imperial Valley. Here in our district is the, uh I had that in mind, is the. Uh if that development originally is going to go through or or if there's some other interests already moving in. If not, it's the, yeah, my person is interested in moving pieces as the, the diffus. To see if that site could be converted into a a wide regional, it's the education, educators. We're not getting into any specifics of deals, but that uh means, but there's one in operation already in Corona.
Chair, chair, before we get off off topic too much, can we go ahead and open up the public comment?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna.
Thank you.
Uh I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public comments for this item at seven twelve. Do we have any public comments on this?
I haven't received any, but is there anyone raising their hands in the audience?
So. Apparently at seven twelve, I'm gonna go ahead and close those public comments. Um do we have any motions?
A motion to table this item until the next planning commission meeting, which is. May eighteenth.
Also, Commissioner, I figure it was a motion.
And with the um request to have the items be asked staff of for that meeting. That'd be specific.
And that would include revenues, housing growth, schools planned, school master plan. This is dispensaries in the city. And where they're concentrated, so.
Do we get a welcome?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Hi.
Commissioner.
Hi.
Commissioner.
Hi.
Hi. Moving forward, now we have our informational, do we have any information?
Uh no, no information other than there, if if you haven't done, there's the hard second assessment training, so. Not everyone has done there yet, so I'm gonna do that, because I do get reminders about it quite a bit. I appreciate it. Executing.
Sexual.
Um and then just for the main seat will be quite a long meeting, so you know. So we have quite a few items for that meeting. We actually have outdoor, do you have our canvas?
So you're providing coffee for any meeting?
Uh this side of and one, another industrial project.
Ready, okay. Is there anything else that any commissioner wants to add before we turn the meeting?
Is there, is there anything new on, I just today read the city's comments. Uh left, left process and also the agreement between the the one district and. And the city is the. Back a few years ago, as a matter of fact, that was the chairman of the planning commission in seventy-nine. When, when we got that uh that grant from economic development department, thanks to Bruce Daniels. Who was the director of the community housing development. Department for Riverside County and then became the city manager here. And thanks to him, that that grant was uh was granted to develop the the. What's it, the source. You know, though I left the planning commission this day, we go to the school board and kept the tabs on what happened. And go seven twenty to thirteen and it's the, at the last meeting, did you guys get into the left?
I I think what, what I would recommend is maybe if we could set up another special meeting, we could address all the issues with. With Labco and then just get an update and kind of share information on what are the surrounding cities proposing. Uh their positions are, so I don't know, maybe in the next couple of weeks, if we can do that, I mean, I would make a.
I I want to finalize my comment, I'd say the following, and I do it openly, although my intention was. Uh to keep it confidential, but since uh this proposal. Uh a plan A, plan B, you know, referred to, okay? In terms of the, it's the sphere of influence. Is the, uh I I would have only proposed plan A. And not put all my guys over the table. Yes, the, and I think it's very important, we we really get into this, we still have time. The final here is not till June, because the jewel is the airport. The jewel is the airport, okay? Back, back in the seventies, it's the, La Quinta wasn't interested, India wasn't interested. Uh Coachella was embroiled in Rubenos in a political dynamic. Where it was all just a struggle for political power in the city. They didn't pay much attention to the airport, although Henry Kasaka was the director of the planning department. I don't know if you come up with some documentation during that era, he's the director. And we would talk all all the time about the airport being the number one priority, okay? It's it's the future, okay? Whoever gets it, La Quinta, the Indian or Coachella. And 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 here we are, four years later, okay? I don't know, maybe it is a top priority. I think it should be the number one priority. And the only one way Coachella is going to get is to that airport is if we block. If we block La Quinta. And and plan A.
Commissioner, sorry to, sorry to interrupt you, but I think this conversation is better saved for another day. Because I wouldn't want something to happen for you to have to end up disqualifying yourself from a further discussion about these actions.
Okay, well, so. It's the, I had, I had to defer with you. It's the, the chair, I think it's the chair's position to interfere in this manner. That legal council. The chair wants to defer.
So we could go ahead and adjudge the meeting, that way we don't run into legal issues further down the line. Uh so at seven nineteen, I'm gonna go ahead and adjudge the meeting.